Yep, it's right on there.
Well, I just should've called you back here to get your staff. I was gonna say, here's my attorney.
President Duncan, it is 7:00 PM.
Okay. It is now 7 o'clock PM, and I will call the meeting to order. May I please get a roll call?
All councilors are present except Clinton Anderson.
Can we all please rise and say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Item 3 is special orders of the day and announcements. There are none. Item 4 is public hearings. 4A is consideration of ordinance number 3770, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan for the property located at 113 Bluff Street.
At this time, our Director Julie Christensen will provide us with an overview for both items, item 4A and 4B.
So, the comprehensive plan amendment for 113 Bluff, Mary Malik, who is the owner, has submitted an application to change the future land use map from parks and open spaces to two-family townhouse residential. This duplex lost its ability to be used as a duplex back in 2018. Included in your packet is a lot of the documentation, which shows when we notified her of the potential loss of status and then the loss of status letter that went to her. So at this point, under the zoning ordinance, it can be used as a single-family dwelling, either rental or owner-occupied. The comprehensive plan recommends parks and open spaces for the subject property. There's three or four houses that, up from Sherland up until Parkland, we do own, that we identified as parks and open space plan when we did our last update. Actually, I think when we did the plan in '08. But in the meantime, it remained zoned, single-family residential, so it could continue to be used in a residential use, and it could actually continue to be used as duplex as long as that use wasn't discontinued for 12 continuous months. At this point, it has been vacant for 12 continuous months, and she is seeking to sell the property, would like to sell the property as a duplex. So she has applied for this comprehensive plan amendment, which is an amendment to the future land use map from parks and open spaces to two-family townhouse residential. And then she's applied for a rezoning from R1A, R1B, single-family residential to R2, two-family residential district, which would then mean it could be used as a duplex. And I realize that my two staff reports give an inconsistent year, but it did lose its status to be used as a duplex. These are both on your agenda for first reading tonight, public hearing and first reading, and Plan Commission did recommend denial. And this is based on the inconsistency with the current comm-plan goals and inconsistency with strategic plan goals, which talk about trying to decrease residential density in one of this neighborhood, as well as the Merrill neighborhood. And so, based on those inconsistencies, they recommended denial.
Thank you, Julie. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward? Final call. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward? The public hearing is now closed. Can I please have a motion to lay over this ordinance?
I so move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Blakely, are there any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item 4B is consideration of ordinance number 3768, amending the zoning district map for the property located at 113 Bluff Street.
Director Christensen has already provided us with an overview of this item, so we will open the public hearing for 4B. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward? Final call. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward? The public hearing is now closed. Can I please have a motion to lay over the ordinance?
I so move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Terrell, are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item 5 is public comments.
We have reached the point on our agenda for residents to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any request at this meeting, but may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you please hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy, and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form. Madam Clerk, were there any public comment forms submitted prior to our meeting?
Yes, Debbie Fisher, 416 College Street.
If you could please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Debbie Fisher. I'm with Youth to Youth, a program of family services, and we're located at 416 College Street. I'm just here to discuss a little findings that I found about the movies and the alcohol being put into the movies. But I did go down to Machesney Park Movie Theater, and I asked a couple of questions to three of their managers. And one thing they said was that alcohol definitely was not a revenue maker for them. In fact, they didn't care either way if it went away or not, because it wasn't making them money. Their sales are very low except at Christmas time, and that seems to be the highest amount of people that go to the movies. And they don't think their sales are low because of restrictions. They said it's because of the selection they have and the cost that it costs to get the alcohol. So that was interesting to see that. They're a bigger facility than Beloit, so they do have a, like a, it's almost like a bar over to the side, but it's not a bar where you can buy alcohol. They do allow alcohol in the auditorium and outside, you know, where you can buy the alcohols. And they did state that they haven't had any problems. They control it, they make sure that nobody's over drinking, and they do restrict the amount of drinks that they can have. So after talking to them and then looking at the Janesville facility too, a couple things that we would just like to recommend to the council and to the movie theaters. It would be wonderful if the alcohol was not sold where you can buy popcorn and pop, just so the normalization to the youth that they see that it's separate, even if it was just a few feet away from where they're selling it, that would be really good. We really, as a coalition, the Executive Board gave me permission to say this, we really hope that you limit it to one drink. And the bracelet, we think is important, because like if they're in the dark movie theater and someone comes through with a flashlight, they can see the bracelet. And I'm very excited, I talked to the movie theater, and they're really happy to use ID checker, and we're really planning to work together. So we're happy that they're so willing to work together and happy that they're not saying no restrictions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Adams, 703 Milwaukee Road.
If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Susan Adams, 703 Milwaukee Road, Beloit. And I'm speaking for the league tonight. I'm the action chair and the secretary. I know that in the Beloit report dated December 22, there was an update on the city manager's search, and it stated that city councilors independently reviewed candidate application materials, and finalists have not yet been selected. The city council will have a public component to the screening process with finalists prior to making a selection. And I know you're meeting tonight in closed session to discuss who the finalists will be, so that's great. Regina Duncan is also quoted as stating that we're committed to a thorough, transparent process and will continue to keep the community informed throughout the process. Now, maybe the public component hasn't been decided upon yet, but we applaud your statement and your, and we hope that the method for involving the public is announced soon. Perhaps it will be similar to the school district superintendent's search, which that seemed to be a good one, that was pretty well attended. And we imagine the public will be invited to meetings with at least a week's notice, and the news media will be informed, and we will be very happy to assist in getting residents this information, so that we have much more participation than Baker Tilly did this last summer with their forums, which were, you know, like on the weekends in the summer, so it wasn't a very good time. But anyway, I hope that we have a lot more participation. And we want to thank you all for all the work that you're putting into this process, because I know it takes a lot of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. And I believe our interim city manager has something to add.
I just want to clarify Susan's comments, that tonight's meeting is about setting the questions for the interviews that will be happening on Friday and Saturday. And the council is committed to deciding what those next rounds will look like, including that public component, once they get a handle on which, how many candidates they have and everything after this Saturday. So we will continue to keep the public informed, but I wanted to clarify, that wasn't happening tonight, it's just interview questions tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Blakely.
And thank you so much for that clarification on our behalf. Are there any other members from the public, Madam Clerk? Okay. Are there any members of the public here tonight that did not sign up who wish to address the council this evening? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, it's Tori Johnson, 2799 Cranston Road, Beloit Theater. I appreciate that you went and you looked and you saw the other theaters and gave your observations. She's absolutely right, and any theater will tell you, the alcohol sales are not what make the business, we agree. But it is what makes people choose you over your competition. So if you decided tonight you wanted to go to a show and you wanted to have a can of beer, you're not coming to the Beloit Theater at this point. And that's kind of why we're really trying to get this into our theaters. In terms of not selling at the counter, and, or yeah, not selling at the counter and limiting one drink, I guess, you know, I urge and I rebut, you know, like she has said, these other sites have not had issues. I have other theaters, a bowling alley, I don't have the issues. And with the way the future is going, unfortunately, I think we're all kind of aware of, you're very aware of your staffing and your expenses, and the cost to staff someone to run only a bar, I think we talked about it last, last time, you might have, you know, 1,000 people come through in the night and you might only sell 10 cans of beer. And you just feasibly will not be able to, and not just classic cinemas, but realistically, any bar unless it's a single show would have a difficult time sustaining that, which is also why some of these other locations that are required to have it separated don't have the sales or the following, because it's not convenient, and they can't afford to staff it all the time, so they don't offer it all the time. And then the one drink, you know, specifically to us, obviously, a husband and wife comes in, they want to be able to get the drink, but even if you're putting yourself at the Biff Theater shows, you know, like you said a couple of weeks ago, you don't want your husband to be denied a drink for you and you have to come out to the show. It really is convenience. But again, all the restrictions that get added, based on this town to this town to this town, are what make people choose our location over the next, because they can come out as a husband and wife, and the husband can bring the drinks to the auditorium. Or they can come out on a Tuesday afternoon and have a drink at our theater where another theater might not be selling at that hour due to restrictions. So again, we just ask and urge as, you know, classic cinemas and really all of the entertainment and movies, you know, that this affects, that you really consider how the rest of Beloit's code reads for every other entertainment industry in Beloit, regardless of, you know, what they do, bowling, baseball, everything is a family event, everything has children, minors working for them, minors attending it, minors coming on their own. It all has the same restrictions in that, but we're not restricting, or we're not proposing to restrict the liquor the same. And that's really why we're here, and we really urge you to just think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who did not sign up who wish to address the council this evening? Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted by email?
Yes, I have one. I am proud of the city council members for setting these restrictions and hope that you will not exempt any of them from the ordinance. As a parent and a consumer, I believe the restrictions that you have in place are already quite generous. I believe lessening the restrictions could create significant problems. Thank you for your service to our community, Erin Howell.
Madam President?
Thank you.
May I ask the Clerk a quick question?
Go ahead, Counselor Blakely.
Marcy, was there anything, a subheading or a heading, or maybe in the subject line, wherein the writer mentioned exactly which resolution they're talking about?
I just said classic movie theater.
Oh, he did say that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Blakely.
You're welcome.
That said, public comment is now closed.
Item 6 is consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any council like anything removed from the consent agenda? Count, Vice President Forbeck.
Yes, I would like two pulled, please. 6D about the Wooton Park pickleball court conversion, and 6E about the Wisconsin Department of Transportation bridge deck replacement.
Okay. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including 6A, B, C, and F? Is there a motion?
I so move the approval.
Moved by Counselor Blakely, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Forbeck, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes. We'll now go to the items pulled from the consent agenda.
Item 6D is consideration of resolution 2023-003, awarding public works contract C-22-06, Wooton Park pickleball court conversion.
Our Director Bill Frisbee will present to us at this time.
This project will convert the three remaining tennis courts at Wooton Park into six new pickleball courts. This project will include repairing and repainting the court's surface for all 10 pickleball courts, installing a gate on the north side fence, and installing fencing to separate the north and south courts. One bid was received for this project from Protrack Tennis, Inc. for $155,000. Protrack and Tennis, Inc. is considered to be a responsible bidder. Their bid was 19% greater than the engineer's estimate of $130,000. I will note that we did bid this project last fall, or last summer, we received no bidders that time, and our engineer's estimate of $130,000 is from last summer. So we've all seen the inflation, so the 19% higher than the engineer's estimate is actually probably a lot closer to what, if we had updated that estimate today. And then, so, cost for this project is $155,000 for construction from the bid, $23,250 for change orders, which we award a 15% contingency for our construction projects, so we don't have to come back to council in case there's any unforeseen problems on the site, or on the project. Total for this project is $178,250. And then I did want to note, we did reach out to nine contractors, trying to get them to bid on this project. They were all qualified for doing things like tennis courts and pickleball courts. One contractor told us they were not willing to pay for plan sets, and we have a nominal fee for using an online bidding service, so roughly $20, $25 for a project. One told us it was too far for them to do the work, one, their schedule was full for the year, one didn't like the scope of our plan set, and then four didn't respond to our inquiries.
You gave it your all.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you, Bill. May I please, we will have discussion in just a moment. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution? Is there a motion?
I so move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Terrell. At this time, we'll take questions and discussion from councilors, and I believe Vice President Forbeck has something she wants to say.
Yes, thanks, Bill. This is, I guess, the reason I asked for this, to be pulled. Does this mean now that all of Wooton will be all pickleball?
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Where are tennis courts? I know there's some that are almost unusable on Riverside Drive, and I write there's some out by the pool. Are there?
The ones at Kruger Park are completely unusable at this point. Riverside is our only other usable courts, and they are not in the greatest shape, there are some cracks in them that need to be repaired. The high school does have tennis courts also, they're generally open to the public, and we're going to be working with the school district to try to advertise those more and ensure that there is public availability for them.
Okay.
But tennis courts will be a continued discussion as we move through like the ARPA process for the public, or for the park improvements.
Okay. I guess I'm, you know, just, I do hear from some tennis players saying that they love to play at Riverside Park, but they really are saying they think it's pretty dangerous.
Yeah, there's some inch to two-inch cracks that have opened up that we need to get sealed up and leveled off, at the very least. Replacement of that, or the tennis courts there is roughly a $400,000 project.
Right, right, exactly. So I guess I'm, I guess I'm just saying, for a while, there won't be any public parks, tennis places, unless and until we get?
Correct. It wouldn't be in any parks, it would just be at the high school.
Okay, okay. And the public can play there?
Correct. Generally, the courts there are unlocked and open, usable to the public.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make that clear.
Bill, I had a couple of questions. Was there expressed interest in the pickleball? And then, is there a timeline of when that will be open, or?
There has been a lot of interest in pickleball and expanding the number of courts there. There's a number of tournaments that happen, there's a few pickleball groups in town. It's one of the fastest-growing sports around, it's, you know, especially for older populations, because you don't have to run as far, it's a little, little bit easier on the body, and it is one of the fastest-growing sports around.
And I know they do have in other areas, and that's why I said, it's wonderful we're having that, and there's been interest expressed in that from our residents, so thank you. Any other further questions or discussion? At this time, we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item 6E is consideration of resolution 2023-006, approving a state municipal agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for state-led concrete bridge deck replacement of STH 213 Bridge, B 53090 over the Rock River.
Director Bill Frisbee will continue to present on this item.
So the attached state municipal agreement is with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation to coordinate a project for the deck replacement of the Broad Street Bridge, which is State Highway 213 over the Rock River. The condition of the bridge deck is really poor, the bearings are rusted, and there's a few other repairs that are needed. Normally, repair on this bridge is a local responsibility. Our city engineer lobbied to the Department of Transportation, they agreed to have the Bureau of Structures come look at it after they were here. DOT has agreed to take the lead on this project. The city will be responsible for 25% of the design cost, the state will fund 75% of it, and then the state will fund 100% of the construction cost. So our responsibility is 25% of design, which total design cost is estimated at $600,000, so our responsibility is $150,000. Construction is slated, or estimated to be $3.9 million, and we would have to pay for any local utility adjustments, if there's any sewers that need to move or any water mains, anything like that. We don't anticipate anything, but there's a nominal amount of $1,500 included in the agreement. Construction for this project would be scheduled for 2029 in the state's budget. And there is some, there is some repairs we will have to do in the meantime, just to the bridge deck. Over the last few years, we've done a couple of projects just trying to fill in some of the potholes. We'll continue to do that to keep the bridge serviceable until 2029 with the full replacement.
Okay. May I please have a motion? Thank you, Bill. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
I so move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Terrell. At this time, we'll take questions and discussions from councilors, beginning with Vice President Forbeck.
Bill, you're talking about the deck replacement, but I'm assuming that the state is also going to help with the other repairs that they found were needed?
Correct. They'll be, they'll be doing the deck replacement, replacing the bridge bearings, the expansion joints, and doing some repairs to the abutment back walls.
This is really good for Beloit, isn't it?
Correct. It's a, it's a large project with the state picking up almost the whole tab.
Well, well done. Thank you.
Counselor Terrell?
No, I don't have anything.
Have a question. And I just have one, if no other councilors have questions, I just wonder, will we keep the residents informed as we move forward with the construction and with everything that's involved in the project?
Yes, we will.
Okay. All right. At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve this resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Thank you, Bill.
Item 7 is licenses, there are none. Item 8 is ordinances. 8A is consideration of ordinance number 3773 to amend Sections 1.76-5-D and 1.76-7-A of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to the Board of Review.
Okay. This is a second reading of this ordinance. May I please have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
I so move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Terrell. Are there any questions or discussion? I just want to mention, I want to thank the staff for their work on this, and this will make us consistent with our state law. So at this time, if there's no other further questions or discussion, there is a motion to approve this ordinance as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
8B is consideration of ordinance number 3765 to amend Section 31.14-3 and 31.30-1, and to create Section 31.28 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to nudity prohibited in licensed establishments and movie theater licensee requirements and restrictions.
This is a second reading of this particular ordinance. May I please have a motion to approve it as presented? Is there a motion?
I so move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Terrell. At this time, we'll take questions and discussion. So at this point, what I would like to do is ask for councilors to, we'll go down the line and have them give their concerns and input as we review this ordinance. Let's start with Vice President Forbeck.
I really don't have any questions. I think that this whole thing is really partially us just updating some old ordinances. I mean, I think this nudity ordinance is from, what, the 20s, Beth? I think.
I don't know in particular if it was the 20s or not. It's been in place for several years as a, as a way to avoid having adult establishments show movies in locations where they were not desirable.
Right.
Quick question, did we skip 8A, or are we going straight to 8B?
We're at 8B right now.
Oh. Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Counselor Blakely.
Yes. Thank you. She sat into the mic. Thank you very much, Madam President. Essentially, I favor the ordinance and have come to believe that all things considered, including participation and interest by youth to youth and other people in the community, is a very good sign, because I think community involvement is a way for this to move forward. I do have a couple of quick questions for you. One is regarding wristbands. I'm just wondering, this may sound wacky, and you probably have another way of handling it, but if wristbands are always the same color, what's stopping someone from just taking home their wristband and recycling it, you know, without having to show ID? So that is a question I have, and I don't know if we're allowed to. I'm just mentioning it as a concern of mine, something perhaps to include as we clarify this. So maybe I will just leave it at that.
Okay.
That part. I mean, I had a thought- I mean, I had a thought that maybe it could be a different colored wristband for different days of the week and then the following week.
Our city attorney will respond to that.
I've made a note of that and then when we go through the list, then we can have a consensus discussion about that issue from the group.
Okay, very good. And then I have one other point too, and that's about the separation, the discreet location. I, I heard what you said, Toi, both tonight and at the other presentation about the theater interior, not having a lot of room to separate out the place from where beer would be served. However, I mean, although I can understand that practical consideration, in my own mind, I think it's a good idea to differentiate it as our youth to youth person was saying earlier from the regular stand and I have an idea about that. Perhaps it could be done just visually, very strongly visually, like a, a separation screen or something of that sort and, and signage. It's a thought on that matter.
Sure. The ordinance is written just to say that it's a discreet area. It doesn't require anything in particular, just that it be kind of denoted as a separate or distinct area. So there's, there aren't any specific regulations regarding that. Someone can decide, you know, what that looks like and so there isn't any onerous restrictions within this ordinance, just that it be discreet.
Okay. And there's no definition by law then as to what discreet means in such a situation as this?
Right, the, if I recall. One second.
Thank you.
Yeah, there isn't a specific definition of discreet. If one was desired, we could look at doing that. But in the definition sub C, it just talks about a bar service area being a discreet area that is within the same building from which alcohol beverages are dispensed and sold to customers of the movie theater for on-premise consumption.
Okay. Thank you. I think those are all my comments at this time.
Okay.
We'll go to Counselor Levy.
Thank you. Attorney Krieger, I guess my comments would be, I, I see there's a lot of information of what we would like to see, restrictions. Counselor Blakely brought up the wristbands. I, I guess for me, and I don't know if this is just a general statement and you can hone in from there, I, I guess I want to make sure that before we pass this ordinance, we think about anything under the sun, that we can think about that we don't have to come back later on and say, oh, we forgot X, Y, or Z. We forgot to think about this. Because I'm one that says, once we pass it, it needs to be ready to go and then as it works itself out, not coming back in three months or so and say, oh, we forgot this. So I guess what I'm asking us to do is take our time and make sure that we get it as tight as we can in the way that we want it. Listening to some of the other counselors and some concerns that they may have. I just think we need to, I don't think there's a rush. I mean, I, I don't think that we need to do this overnight. I think we really need to take a hard look at it, make sure that it's capturing everything that we wanted to capture. My fear is, is that we, we heard about it, this is a desire and I applaud the staff for putting together, but then here we are, we got something in place and kudos to staff for getting it done in such a short amount of time. But I want to make sure that when we, once we pass it, it's ready to go and you tweak it every blue moon and not too much down the road, we're coming back looking at it again. So I'm just going to ask us to slow it down and maybe bring it back in two weeks with other comments that you may hear from other counselors, get their thoughts, but come back with another copy or saying, here's what I heard, here's what I think I heard and you know, I think the direction that the council wants to go in. I just want to make sure that we get it as tight as we can. And I don't know if that makes sense or give you the direction that you need.
No, it, it does make sense and I'm comfortable with the draft ordinance in front of you that it, it contains all of what staff believes is important for the regulation of alcohol in movie theaters. It's now just a matter of tweaking it to what is desired for council.
And so what we're hearing from counselors tonight is to get direction from each counselor and to get their input and concerns, what they'd like to add in or to have, maybe to revisit and take another look at. So we could go ahead with Counselor Day.
All right, thank you. I'm, I just take a little bit of a common sense approach toward this. So I look at it like, if we are going to change the ordinance to allow the sales, people have to be able to purchase the alcohol. So if I go in there and I have to have a wristband, I have to sit in a separate area in the movie theater. I mean, there's so many limitations and restrictions, it's like, is anybody going to even buy the alcohol? So if we are going to give them the ability to sell it, it has to be done in a common sense manner. So I can make the suggestions to the changes, suggest changes to what's been listed here or how would we like to do that?
If you have particular concerns, you can voice them now and then we can go from there. I'll just note that you'll, you do see wristbands at other events where there's alcohol sold, so like the street dance and things. So it's not an unusual thing to see, especially when you've got different people carting versus, you know, selling and, and things like that. So it's not, I don't think it lacks common sense. I think it's used as a mechanism to assist in the sale to make sure that gets into the right hands.
Yeah, maybe I should rephrase that, that it is common sense if you go to a, you know, concert or something like that and you get carted, you have a wristband and you go back and forth to the place to get alcohol multiple times. I don't think that's the kind of sales that they're asking for here. It's just having options for people. So, you know, my suggestion would be having a separate seating area is, I don't think that's necessary.
That's not included? That was from the Plan Commission?
That was a possible change that.
Right, that isn't in the current draft though. So that wasn't added at the last meeting, so you don't have that before you as a possibility.
So I'm reading off the list here. So there's two items here. One was separate seating locations and the other one was limiting the size of the drinks to 24 ounces, less than 24 ounces, not to exceed.
And I believe that was a recommendation from the Plan Commission?
That was a recommendation from the Alcohol Commission and neither of those were actually built into the ordinance.
Yes, that's not built in.
So they're not there now. If you'd like to add them, we can, but if you don't want them, they're not in there
No, that's fine.
To consider tonight.
The other ones here were suggested restrictions here to be removed from the draft ordinance. And that was going from one drink to two, which I don't see a problem with that. And if there's a way to identify the alcohol that can be done easily, I mean, that can be thought out, but we put stickers in here, we have different containers, we give the option to the operator to do that, just so it's identifiable as a separate beverage, right? That's what you're saying here?
Right. The intent is to have a distinct container for alcohol beverages versus non-alcohol beverages.
Okay. So that makes sense to me. And then having the ability to sell, you know, the alcohol at the counter, but it could be at the end of the counter, that would be a discreet location. So people line up to the end of the counter and that could easily be done.
You arguably could put up a screen on the countertop and have a cooler on the other side of it and still be in compliance with the draft.
I think that's reasonable too. I think that addressed the five items. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Day. And I was just going to say, let me just clarify, I didn't mean Plan Commission, I meant Alcohol and Beverage License Committee. So I'm, I apologize for that. So I just wanted to clarify that. I've been saying that a couple of times. I just want to reiterate that to the public. Thank you, Counselor Day, for that input. Next, Counselor Terrell.
Well, pretty much, Counselor Day addressed some of the same concerns that I had. I, I personally believe that, given, and I spoke on this last time, given that this movie theater does good business here in the City of Beloit and they, they keep their prices affordable, I just believe that with some of the restrictions that I'm seeing that it might be too much oversight. I do trust that they, I, I personally believe that, that the city shouldn't have to tell somebody how to run their business as far as like, uh, thing, as far as like limits and seating requirements and things like that, which was brought up. Security is highly enforced in there. I, I was just in there, like last week, went to see Avatar, spent $32 with a friend. Didn't spend too much. But like I say, the, the competition in the area, like I know Machesney was brought up. You know, that kind of money spending here at the Beloit Movie Theater would not be, that, that wouldn't get you too far in Machesney. So I just, I just thought that some of the things that has been brought up as far as the seating and the drink limits and everything, the only thing I could truly say that I agree with is the wristbands. But I do trust the business to be able to be discreet and, and separate what they think should and shouldn't be done within their business without us having to play mom and pop and basically tell them what to do. I'm, I'm confident enough that they're doing good business already and they already had a ducks in a row. So for me personally, I believe the wristbands is, is, you know, is acceptable in the, the locations as far as where the alcohol is, is being sold at. I agree with that as well, but everything else I think is just too much oversight and I don't want to put that off on the business here in Beloit, especially when we're not doing that to other businesses here. And I echo again, I say once again, that the Beloit Movie Theater for the average person in the City of Beloit, they're, they're giving good, affordable prices and good deals. And I don't want to see businesses coming here doing things like that for people to have to feel like we have to give them all this kind of oversight. So wristbands and separate selling locations as far as alcohol, I can agree with that, but everything else I think is, is just unnecessary.
So would you like that stricken? Are you saying the, because I think it was the cup holders and some of the other things? Or are you just saying you would only agree to the wristbands?
I would agree, personally, I would agree to the wristbands and maybe the separate locations as far as where the alcohol is being sold. But with all the other businesses here in Beloit as far as alcohol, they're pretty much doing the same things. So those are the only things. So if it's anything outside of what I just mentioned, those are the things that I would like to see stricken.
Okay. Vice President Forbeck?
Yes, just one more time. I just want to remind ourselves, because I just had to remind myself. You know, we go to our fabulous new baseball stadium and I take my kids. It never occurs to me to think that I should be watching out for somebody who has a beer there. I mean, I, I think it's just unusual. I mean, this is new stuff to be able to have a, a beer at a movie theater. But I, I think that we need to not put it as though it's a completely different entertainment entity. So I think we, I, I agree, I believe with Kevin and Marquis. I think that the wristbands are important and if they can be discreet in selling, where they sell it from, I, I would like to see those be the only restrictions.
And if I may add one more thing, uh, I, there might be other businesses that are looking to relocate here in Beloit and we want to send the right message to those people that they can come here and actually do business and not have to, you know, have the council basically giving way too much oversight over how they, how they do things here. We want to welcome people here and be like, hey, we're all adults, you know, 21 and older, you know, things like that. We trust businesses to come here and do what, you know, what's, what's within the law here in the City of Beloit. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I just think, you know, it, going into what Kevin said, you know, that, what he meant in a common sense approach, I believe that's what it is. That's what he was trying to allude to was that we should just trust businesses who are doing things here in Beloit, especially when they're doing good business in Beloit. We should trust them to be able to disagree with, you know, basically right and wrong, you know, so to speak. But the wristbands, I say, I say again, like that, that right there, I would think is a little bit of common sense and just separating where the beer would be at or be sold at with, you know, as Kevin said, common sense, you know. Other than that, everything else is just pretty much like, let's just let them run their business without too much restriction on them, because that might send a bad message to other people, you know. So I'll leave it there, sorry.
Thank you, Counselor Terrell. Next, Counselor Levy.
Thank you, Madam President. And just, I, I just feel the need to respond and I, I hear what Counselor Terrell, Terrell is saying, but I want us to be careful in saying that we're telling businesses what to do. We're not really telling them what to do. We're allowing them to run their business, but we also are here to set rules, regulations and make sure that they follow what they have to by law, follow what we're asking other businesses to do, like the Ball Diamond, when they came here. We didn't tell them, this is how you, this is what time you open, this is what time you close. We're not dictating to businesses, this is what you have to do. What we're saying is, and that's why it goes through Plan Commission and other committees, so they can have input in, so when it comes to us, we can make a decision and work together as a partnership in saying, okay, we understand you want to have this, this is something new. So with anything new that we do in the city, we do our research. Kudos to staff who's checked out the Machesneys and the Jamesvilles and said, we don't have this. So what are you doing? So then we come back and we say, hey, Jamesville does it this way, Machesney does it this way, we understand, here's how you want to do it. How can we bring in all the information, the research that we did and make sure that we have something successful for the city, but make it compromise, make it fair for everybody in the city? So I don't think by doing that, we're saying, this is what we think you should do or this is what you have to do. We're giving them recommendations and kudos to them for saying, we hear what you're saying, we can do that. Or you know what, we're really not feeling that, can we do it this way? So the partnership is there. I think if, it would be reversed if they wanted to have the alcohol and we said, the only way you can have it is boom, 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 in the discussion, then we're dictating and telling them what we do. But we have a lot of businesses that have come to the city and doing well. And we do that by cooperation and partnership and not viewed as we're telling them what they do. So I don't think the discussion that we're having is going to stop future businesses from coming here. I think if someone wants to come here with a business, they're going to say, we're going to a city that does their homework, does their research, but still work with us to make sure that once we get there, it's successful. The worst thing they could do is put it in and three days later, pulling it out because something didn't go right. So I, I just want us to caution that. It's not like we're dictating and telling them, this is what you have to do. But we gotta, we are also here to set here, to set regulations and rules for the city to, for the citizens of, for the citizens of the city. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Counselor Terrell.
I was just going to say, fair, that's a fair correction. I just, overall, I just seen a lot of restrictions in there, just in general, that I just felt like it, it, that's just how it looked to me, but I probably should have heard it. So that's a fair correction, Kevin Levy. I apologize about that, so I'll leave it there.
You don't need to apologize, it's okay.
But it sounded like you were, I'm just trying to clarify what counselors are saying, that most people are in favor of the wristbands. But I think there was also, and tell me if I'm wrong, was there something in there with the cup holders or the stickers or something? Because I saw.
Only person that mentioned the distinct container was Counselor Day. Nancy, you originally said you didn't have concerns, but now it sounds like you agree with Counselor Terrell to only have wristbands in discreet location? Okay. And Counselor Blakely, you were interested in maybe having different colored wristbands for probably different days or some way to differentiate maybe repetitive use of a wristband or something along those lines?
Yes, ma'am. May I respond briefly to that?
Sure.
I just, I don't think those things should be set into law. There are more suggestions.
Okay.
Right.
For the theater owners and managers.
Okay. So the ordinance, I just want to walk through the ordinance. The ordinance requires that the movie theater have adequate security measures in place and some of those security measures are making sure they have proper training for staff. So is, you want to remove that from the ordinance?
No, we want the training to stick.
Okay. So we're keeping training. We're keeping, one of the rules are utilize distinct containers in which alcohol beverages are sold, including a sticker affixed to such container. Do you want to keep the containers, remove the sticker? Do you want to get rid of the containers? What is the consensus of the group?
I just say a container. I have no idea why you'd need a container and a sticker.
Me neither.
And I would say either or. I agree with Counselor Forbeck. That's doubling up on something that doesn't need doubling up on.
Okay.
And I would agree. I would echo that. Anyone else?
I think it could be a can or bottle or whatever it is, really. I mean, and we're not only talking about the movie theater here. Remember, we're talking about BIF or anything else that comes to town.
These provisions are specifically related to the movie theater operation, so BIF-
The only movie theater.
BIF is exempted under a different section of the statute about the nudity. So this is an operate, where they're actually operating a movie theater business. So if you want, if you want to allow bottles and cans, um, we can make that distinction if that's what you would, uh, want to allow. I'm assuming they're not going to use glass, um, but they make aluminum bottles.
It's just cans.
Okay.
It's cans.
Well, uh, if they say cans, I, I, we say cans.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so the training component stays, that's in that first section, correct? Adequate lighting is listed in here. Is that still something that can be preserved? Okay.
I don't understand the adequate lighting.
Sometimes lighting in movie theaters can be very dark and so to make sure that you have adequate lighting, to make sure that you can read IDs and do your job, um, to make sure that.
Well, like, can I ask you a question on the training section? Is that allowed or no?
Um, we'll, we'll, we'll get with you. Let us just kind of, I don't want to cut you off, but we gotta move forward. Go ahead.
Okay. So the next section is the bar service area being a discreet area. It sounds like the majority of you, uh, agree with that.
And we're trusting them to be discreet.
Right.
We're not telling them what they have to do.
Discreet is meaning separate or, you know, identifiable, not necessarily, um, hidden. Okay, um, then we have an ordinance requirement for an operational plan. So any movie theater that is, um, wanting to get an alcohol license, they have to provide an operational plan evidencing, evidencing compliance with the provisions of this law. Is that something that wants to be preserved or removed?
Can you repeat that?
An operational plan. So oftentimes you have alcohol license applicants, they'll come in with a business plan, a business model, about how they're going to run their establishment. So it's already required as part of the alcohol licensing piece of it. This is just, uh, an additional piece of that would say how they're going to comply with this ordinance.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I'm seeing nods. Um, the next section talks about sales of alcohol beverages being limited to contracted theater rentals, theater production, box office events, so that they couldn't necessarily just open to sell alcohol without also having a movie theater or an event happening at their establishment.
A clarification, if I may, I don't know if they do, I don't know if they do that or not, but what if they ran it out for a birthday party?
It would be, yeah, it would be an event that they could have alcohol. We're trying to avoid them setting up or avoiding the possibility of someone setting up a bar in a movie theater selling alcohol when they weren't functioning as a movie theater in some capacity.
Right.
Whether that's private rental or public movies.
Some contracted theater rental would be public more privately.
Correct.
Contracted with film studios, contract with you hosting your birthday party.
And Attorney Krieger, where does that appear within the current?
Subsection five.
Go up to section five.
Okay.
I'm struggling with that one. I, I am, um, if, I'm struggling, first of all, I mean, as they know, I'm struggling with the ordinance as a whole. But I'm really struggling with the piece that if it's a birthday party for, for kids, that's, that's, I'm struggling there. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold it up. I'm just really struggling with that piece.
Can you read that one again?
Sure, it's under sales.
Cause we can't find it. Hold on one second.
Subsection five, under operational plan. It's on page four.
Oh, page four. Hang on one second.
Page four, huh?
Three. Oops, did I pass it?
You did. Page four.
Number four.
It's right above the one drink maximum.
Oh, here.
Okay, go ahead.
So sales of alcohol beverages shall be limited to contracted theater rentals, theater production, box office events, and regularly scheduled motion pictures or films. So it just means that that, the sale of alcohol has to be in companion to piece to them having a movie shown, having events there.
I'll give it a thumbs up.
The alternative is not having that in there and then they can sell alcohol whenever they want to provided they're in compliance with the closing hours laws, which are six AM, two AM to six AM.
Instead, did this report incomparable with other businesses, am I right?
Right, this was just a, a way to limit alcohol sales to only when they're operating as a movie theater and that they wouldn't operate as a, essentially like a bar without having the movie theater business in operation. Can I move on? Counselor Levy?
So, so basically.
Getting a consensus that we want to move forward with that one.
You can, you can open it up for having a bar on a Saturday and selling beer without even having a movie.
Correct.
It's not the fact that I don't want it in there. I, I'm, I'm just struggling with the fact of, I get it. Um, if we're, if we're talking about going to the movie on a Friday, Saturday night, Sunday night, but if I'm having a three-year-old child's bir- a birthday party there and we want to go see a movie, that's my struggle. I, I, and we don't have to belabor it, but that's, that's, I'm struggling there. I'm really struggling with that piece.
Understood.
And I don't know if there's a way, and it's probably, if it's not the majority of the council feels that way, then it's a, it's a, it's a new point because it doesn't matter, but I just struggle with that, that we have a captive audience that's not really adults. We have a captive audience of children. That's my, that's different from a Friday, Saturday, Sunday or any other night when we're adults going there. So that's, that's where I struggle.
Understood.
But then I look at two, we're talking about beer and we're having it in a cinema where children will be coming and look at movies with their parents and families too. So it's just like, we're talking about doing something new in this movie cinema and so we need to be aware of that. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
Well, I know, I totally get that and I totally understand that. But the purpose we're having the discussion is to let the city attorney also know where our struggles are. So if she needs to add anything to the new ordinance that she may be bringing back, where it encompasses all of our thoughts and our feelings and our struggles. Um, so if it doesn't make it in there, that's fine, but I do want it to be on the record that that's my struggle, so.
Yeah, I don't see a consensus for that issue, but I certainly, your, your point is noted.
I'm good, I'm good with that.
Okay. Uh, next, we have a one drink maximum. Um, there was some, um, discussion by Counselor Day to perhaps increase that to, I did not hear that from any of the other counselors, so where do we fall on one drink maximum or two?
Go ahead, uh, Counselor Terrell.
That's one of those things where I, I stated before that I would like to trust the business to know when to cut somebody, cause again, nobody is going to a movie theater. Once we pass this, I'm pretty sure the public is not going to be like, oh, okay, the movie theater is selling beer now, we about to go up there and get drunk. You know, it's like a million, I'm, not a million, I want to be specific. It's, it's, it's like, uh, twenty bars here in Beloit. You know, people can know where they can go drink at. I think people are just going to the movie theater just to have a good time for a couple hours. Giving whatever the limits are on the beers or whatnot, I, and, and then we're sending, like I, like I say, I just, I, I just don't want to give that a vote because, uh, I, I just say to just let them, um, discreet, be discreet on their own about what, uh, I mean, let them separate as far as like, how, how, what the drink minimum or maximum is on their own as far as who comes in there and consumes it. I would like to give them that ability to do that on their own. And that's one of those things where I say it's like a little bit too much oversight. So, uh, I'll leave it there. So that's a down vote for me.
Counselor Forback?
I, I have to agree. I mean, it's just like, I'm trusting these people. They're not gonna be selling any beer to somebody who looks in all, in, at all inebriated. I mean, if, if I'm gonna go, everybody keeps talking about a husband getting a drink for their wife, but I mean, what if I'm there? And I, I tell Ken, I couldn't get a drink for him. I, I don't know. I don't even know if I'm ever gonna have a drink at a, um, movie theater, but we have to stay in our mind that this is a professional business that, that I, I trust to be able to handle, uh, people who, who want to drink, just like any other place, a restaurant, um, a bar. I mean, and it's not going to be that many. The, the, the movie theater, the, I mean, the, the, uh, baseball theater.
Thank you, Vice President Forback. Um, I'll go with Counselor Blakely and then back to Counselor Levy.
Okay, thank you. I am deciding against that, um, aspect, the one drink maximum. Because I can very well imagine that, you know, um, one person buying a drink for a friend or a spouse. You know, not being able to legally, right?
One, and then, one thing you want to think about if you're going to keep wristbands as opposed to the cups. The wristbands are going to have to have someone's ID checked. And if they're not being checked at the point of sale, they need to be checked at another point in time because the ordinance still requires wristbands. Um, and it sounds like the majority of you want to continue with those wristbands. It's easier to enforce a distinct cup um, than it is a wristband because if you have a partner to go to the counter and buy you a beverage and bring that back to the seat, someone can see that you have a distinct cup that contain, that contains alcohol. Um, and you don't have to leave your seat. However, if you want to drink and have someone else pick up your drink, you still have to be carded at some point along the way. And so you may want to consider whether distinct cups are an alternative to the wristband that may be more effective in accomplishing the, um, lack of a maximum drink provision.
That makes sense.
Makes sense. It gets complex. Who would have thought that, that cups and wristbands?
I've done prosecution for twenty-five years, so I've had my share of, of.
Counselor Levy, then I'll add something. Go ahead, Counselor Levy.
Good point. So I just, I'm getting clarification here. And so walk with me, cause this, so, to Counsel, uh, Vice President Forback's statement, and I want to use that as an example. I just used myself. So I'm there at the movie with my wife. And we're in there watching the Whitney Houston movie. And she says, when you go get you something to drink, bring me something back too. If I'm hearing you correctly, at some point, my wife is going to have to be carded, correct?
If you keep the wristband requirement, she would have to get carded at some point in her experience at the movie theater. To get the wristband.
But you're saying, but if we have a coated cup, she wouldn't have to because if Eric walks through, he can see that she has a red cup.
That's the issue that comes down to making a one drink, um, removing the one drink maximum.
Yeah, I'm getting there first. I just want to make sure that I got this squared away first.
Yep.
So, so it's better to go with the coated cup, as you said, because if Eric walks through, he can say, red cup, red cup, okay, that's alcohol versus, can I see your wristband? Can I see your wristband? It's easier to identify. So I get that. But now if I'm reading this, the one drink maximum, it says the movie theater shall not serve or deliver more than one alcohol beverage to a customer at a time and a customer cannot have more than one alcohol beverage in their possession at one time. So if I'm reading this, and this is where I need the clarification, this is not saying that I can only have one drink. It says one drink at a time, correct?
Correct.
So, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear because when I was hearing some of the comments, and maybe I took it that way, that people were thinking we get one drink. But it, but if I'm reading the ordinance the way it is written, it's saying one drink at a time. So if, and Eric, I'm just using you as an example, if he walks through, Kevin, you got two drinks, you can't have two. But if I have one, drink that and then go back, I could still get another drink.
You can.
Because I can have one drink at a time and then I can have one drink in my possession at a time. So, and then, um, or deliver, so then it looks like for this, we need, if we're talking about changing anything, it seems like the only part in that statement that needs to be changed is the, is the part that says deliver more than one alcohol beverage to a customer. So what I'm hearing is maybe we remove that. So it reads, the movie theater shall not serve um, more than one alcohol beverage to a customer at a time and the customer cannot have more, more than one alcohol beverage in their possession. Because that will still allow me to care, walk away from the counter with two drinks, one for me and one for my wife.
This would prohibit that.
Right.
So the language, right. And so serve and deliver are meant to be similar, but not, um, not implied delivery to another person. But this one drink maximum was intended for one person to have one drink, purchase it in their hand at any one point in time.
Right.
And then also at the same time, they've been carded and wristbanded
Right.
under the draft ordinance.
Right. But I can go back and get another one.
But you can go back as many times as you want to get out of your seat and go back and get a drink, correct?
But I wouldn't be able to take one to my wife.
Correct.
So.
Right, so I just want to make sure that we were clear because we're saying, it sounds like we're saying one drink and we were done. But so I just wanted to make sure I put that out there to clarify it, that that's not what this is saying.
Um, just a minute, counselors. Counselor Blakely?
Thank you very much. Um, I, I believe I heard clearly what you said, Kevin, about the wristband problem and the, um, specific cups, the designated cups. I am now changing my mind on the wristbands. You talked me into the designated cups, sir, cause it makes better sense for enforcing, uh, enforcing this.
It doesn't matter, cause they're gonna use cans anyway, so.
Right, there'll be cans for some.
I say we use cans and a clear plastic cup and it's distinguished or designated because we don't sell any other product in cans and we don't sell any other product in a clear cup. So if you ever saw that.
Right, I think when the attorney said red cup, it was just an example of a different cup. But I, I do want to finish my comment if I could, that I still think the one drink maximum clause should be stricken because as, um, the attorney was saying, Attorney Krieger was saying, a person could not hold one can or container, glass in one hand, in one and another for a friend or guest and take it back into the theater.
Exactly.
And also there is, it's being clarified now about the wristbands and the needing to card someone, you know, when, when the other person comes to the counter with a wristband. So I'm withdrawing my liking of the wristbands in favor of having the designated cups instead. However, I do want to eliminate the one drink maximum. Thank you.
Counselor, any other counselors? Everybody, look, we could just see a head nod. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, Sherri, that, pretty much what you just said, cause what I, the way I was looking at it is like, if, if it's two couples in there having a drink and then you telling them that they only got to have one drink in their hand and they might get up and want to go get a drink for their partner, then that call, that, that they're going back to the movie, they got to get their cup and then go back. That's just a waste of time. That's what I'm saying, all this, like, i- i- it's just too much, in my opinion. So I agree with you, Sherri. I'll just leave it there.
Other counselors in agreement? Can I see a head nod or?
Yes.
And I just want to just, I know it seems tedious and, and people at home are watching and kind of confused. I just want to make mention that in the past, we have been consistent, this council has, as it pertains to the alcohol being served in the area. So for us, this is a very serious, serious thing and we understand that children and families, um, also go to the movie. So this is why we're taking so much time to make sure we get it right. And also I just want to express, thank you, Eric, for your business. I went in there personally. I went to all the auditoriums. I've had conversations with you and Deb and what I would like to see even more as we move forward is your continued partnership together. Because I think that is key. We, like you said, Deb, at some point, we probably knew something like this was going to happen, change, times are changing. And so we have to change with those, but we also want to make sure that there is enhancement and enforcement so that our families and children are safe. So, while they're having fun, cause we want people to have fun and also do business here in Beloit. So I just want to say that. So, um, that said, we'll go ahead and move forward with the next item.
I hate to do this. We still have some provisions here I need to double check on.
That's correct.
Um, you've got bar service areas, that there not to be any service areas, uh, stools or anything in the lobby area and that all the consumption should happen in the auditorium. Is there a desire to remove that provision? Okay. Um, food service shall be available for all, at all times alcohol is being served. That's in the ordinance. Does that want to? be removed or ca, ca, kept? Okay. Food isn't defined, it can be as simple as popcorn.
I'm getting really hungry, that's your good spot.
Um, we have in here the, the single serving provision, you can't have pitchers or buckets, you gotta have, uh, single serve containers. Um, I believe I've heard a new consensus on wristbands, that we're moving away from the wristbands and the requirement for carding, and that you have the distinct cups, and that the, that movie theater will have the obligation to make sure that those with the distinct cups consuming it are over the age of twenty-one.
Yes.
Um, we have a provision about making sure signs are posted throughout the movie theater to let them know about underage sales is prohibited and over serving is prohibited, those can stay, I'm assuming. Okay. Um, and an obligation to monitor the premise to make sure the ordinance is being complied with is still there, I'm assuming that can stay as well. Okay.
Counselor Levy has a question on that one.
Uh, never mind, I, it was answered.
Counselors, let me know if you want me to stop someone. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I believe I have enough direction to come back with something, um, at the next meeting. Um, we'll get that to you, and then hopefully have captured what you're looking for, um, to move this forward at the next meeting. Thank you.
And so what I would like to ask, if our city attorney could please prepare a substitute amendment to this.
I will do that. You need a motion, uh, you need your motion and second to withdraw their motions to be replaced by a motion to lay it over.
Some more.
Who, who is the? Um, Count, Madam Clerk, who is the motion, first and second?
It was Vice President Forbeck. Was it Vice President Forbeck and Counselor Terrell?
Okay.
Okay, so.
I, I moved to remove my.
Okay.
Motion.
Do you agree with that, Counselor Terrell? Do you agree with her withdrawing her motion? Would, would you agree to withdraw your second?
So you have to withdraw yours.
So I gotta withdraw mine, so we go through this new thi, oh, I'll withdraw.
Okay.
Sorry.
So now you're looking for a motion to lay the matter over to your next meeting for a substitute amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Vice President Forbeck, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Terrell. Are there any further questions or discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Do we need any kind of separate vote on your asking for a substitute amendment? Or is it understood that that will be done now?
There's a, there's a motion on the floor now, um, to lay the matter over for a substitute amendment.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
Item eight C is consideration of ordinance number thirty-seven seventy-four to amend various sections of chapters six, seven, eight, nine, twenty-two, and twenty-seven of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to updates to the Fire Pro, Prevention Code, Property Maintenance Code, Plumbing Code, Building Code, Wireless Communications Code, and City Water Utility Code.
Our Director, Julie Christensen, will present it this time.
So since, sorry, since two thousand and six, we've had a, an agreement with Premium Plan Bureau Johnny Egan to do our building plan review for building and HVAC, um, but the other trades, um, like plumbing and fire suppression and alarm, um, were done by the state. Um, what we're finding is that, that sometimes can delay a project by several months. With, um, John Egan nearing retirement and ti, kind of trying to gradually take lesser of a load. Um, he is now working for a company called E-Plan Exam, and we are, we've done a RFP, looked for other entities that do the same thing, and have selected E-Plan Exam. Um, and they're working with us to get delegated status for the plumbing plan review and the fire suppression and alarm. And that will allow for a much quicker turnaround on those building plan reviews, which will get projects going, project, you know, buildings in the ground, add tax base, and all of that. Um, in order to get the delegated status, all your ordinances just need to be up to date. Um, there was a change a while back from COM to SPS, um, so from Commerce, from, to Safety and Professional Services. And so this ordinance does provide the updates to the code to re, ref, related to those references to the appropriate state regulation. Um, terminology and titles haven't updated to keep accurate and current. Overlooked provisions were updated to reflect current practice, and duplicative or redundant language has been removed. Um, and although it's not, not exactly, it's not part of the ordinance, but, and as part of that new relationship with the plan review, um, everything gets submitted electronically, um, they use a program called Smart Sheet, so we can actually see plans as they're submitted and look at them electronically, um, so much, you know, more environmentally friendly. Um, and also, um, we will get ten percent of the revenue that they get for the plan review back to the city. Right now, we're not paying for any of the plan review, um, but we're also not getting revenue back, so ten percent of the revenue will come back to the city. So that's another upside to this. Um, and this is on your agenda for first reading tonight.
Thank you, Julie. This is a first reading of this ordinance. Is there a motion to lay the ordinance over for a second reading?
Some more.
Moved by Counselor Terrell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Forbeck. Are there any questions or discussion? I just want to mention, as Julie said, that this allows us to get delegated status, so we are complying with this code.
And I would like to acknowledge that a lot of the heavy lift in the early days and working through this was done by Drew Pennington. So I just kind of did the end work, but you did a lot of the heavy lift on the front end, so.
Here, here.
Thank you, Drew, thank you so much. Much appreciated. At this time, we have a motion and a second, the latest ordinance over for a second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item nine is appointments, there are none. Item ten is counselor activities and upcoming events.
Let's start with Counselor Blakely.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say, congratulations to our colleague, um, Clinton Anderson, who, as you know, in November was elected to the Wisconsin State Assembly as the representative from District forty-five, I think I have the number right. So he was sworn, sworn into office today up in Madison. So congratulations to Clinton. And I do look forward to working with you here on council for the next few months, and wish you well in the future representing us up in Madison. Also, um, I was really pleased to see that our cable channel, the one that is running this now and will rerun it, is following, is focusing on a variety of Beloit activities, not just Beloit College, not just the City of Beloit. There's music, there are films there, but they all, tonight, they were showing, or this afternoon, rather, they were showing a rerun of the Beloit special. I forget the exact name of it, and it was, the only piece that was outdated really was that the Angel Museum was still included, rather than it having been changed over to what it is today. But look in on that channel for more than city council meetings. There's, there's a lot of entertainment there and a lot of learning to be done. So thank you to our TV station. And I'm stalling, but I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Blakely. Next, Counselor Levy. Okay. Counselor Day.
Thank you, no report.
Okay, Counselor Terrell.
All right. Uh, I will want to extend my congratulations to Clint as well. Uh, it's been really good serving with him, and, uh, as Sheri said, these next couple months, I feel like we got a lot more to get done, and I feel like, uh, my colleague is gonna do some really good things in Madison, so I wanted to throw that out there. But I will say, um, other than that, this last Sunday, and I don't want to get too religious with people, and I understand people have their own beliefs, some people are religious, some people aren't. But, uh, this past Sunday, on the first of the beginning of the new year, um, I had recently got baptized. And, um, you know, I, I just, I, like I said, I don't want to get too religious, but I want to throw a message out there. Um, when I was younger, in my younger days, and I'm talking about around twenty, between twenty and under, um, I, I, you know, I was a, a knucklehead. I used to do some, some things and say some things that was unnecessary, and I always felt, you know, like, being, seeing young people out here nowadays, I know that there are, there are young people, youth, uh, young adults who are involved in things and doing things, and I know that, eh, you know, it's kind of like a followers mentality, which I had. And, and wanting to be a part of the group, and wanting to be cool, and all that kind of stuff. And, um, I always talk to young people about why it's not necessary to be like that, why it's, it's a lot less stressful to just be yourself, because I used to be like that when I was a young person, following the crowd and trying to be cool and trying to fit in. And, um, when I got baptized, one of the things that I thought about the entire time was how I was when I was a kid. And, um, I always wanted to at least be one of the examples, not the only example, but one of the examples to young people who are living in that lifestyle and going home at night and thinking like, man, why did I do that? That's not me, that's not who I am. Um, and feeling bad about things, but they're doing it because they want to fit in. And I just wanted to put it out there to the youth and to people watching, like, I was one of those at one time, and I felt like I had to cleanse myself of that and, uh, be sitting at the seat where I'm at today, so now I could talk to young people about, it's not over, you know, you, you can make mistakes, so you could do things, and uh, you know, you can repent from it, and you can grow, and you can sit at this council seat and, and be able to make decisions on behalf of over thirty-seven thousand people in the City of Beloit. Or even do hi, something bigger and better than that, which I want to see a lot of young people do. So it was important for me to do that for myself, so that I could really feel good about talking, you know, uh, sending this message out to young people as far as, you know, uh, repenting from things that they've done in the past, and acknowledging, you know, like I'm acknowledging now, that I was a knucklehead, I was a follower, I was trying to fit in with the crowd, and as I got older, I realized that it was something, it was just me being dumb, and, and that's why I'm at this seat right now, to be able to, you know, uh, with a passion, do the things that I felt like I needed to do, and, um, you know, and, and get out of that, that, that kind of lifestyle at a young, when, when I was at a young age, and as I say, wash myself of those sins that I had. And, um, I just hope a lot of young, uh, enough young people can see this, and, um, and, and watch other leaders hopefully do the same thing, and, you know, uh, and I hope it helps a lot of young people grow from that, and, and do some good things in the future, and know that they don't have to fit in, and try to be with, you know, try to be seen and things like that, but just do what's in their heart, if they, i- if, if that's what, what, what it's meant to be for them. So, uh, I just wanted to leave it there, and, uh, thank you, sorry for taking up so much time.
I just want to say, just add to that, Counselor Terrell, I've known you ever, since you've been a young, young boy, and now you're a grown man, and I just want to say that I am so proud of you. And that does take a lot of courage to share that with the public. I think people see us on TV, and they don't know the people who, they don't know who we are. We're more than just a seat at the table, but we're people with, with, who have families and children and grandchildren, and so there are people who are watching who look up to you, and so I'm proud of you, and, um, I just am appreciative that you felt comfortable enough to share that part of your story with us, so thank you. Vice President Forbeck.
Well, I also want to say thanks, Marquise. Okay, and congratulations, of course, to Clinton. And I want to say that since our last meeting, I've been spending a lot of time trying to do my homework because we are having a big decision on who we're going to choose to be our next, um, city manager. And of course, I also was busy trying to get, um, signatures on my nomination papers, because I'm gonna run one more time in April, and I'm honored to do that, and I'm telling you, working especially so intensely with some of the issues that we do, and now as we are being very serious about our responsibilities in getting a new city manager, um, I can't tell you how pleased I am to be part of this team. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Um, first, before I get started tonight, I have a speech, but, that I'm gonna just, a small one, that I'll give briefly, but I just want to give my heartfelt sympathy to Linda and Andre Fair, in the loss of their son, Drelin Fair. So let's keep the Fair Hickman and Williams family in our thoughts and prayers, I just want to mention that. And then, on a lighter note, I would like to thank Eric for being here tonight, Deb was also here earlier. I appreciate your partnership together. And I just want to thank you, Eric, for what you're doing. I actually went into the cinema, I took a tour, it was wonderful, there were so many children and families there. And also Tori, just happy to have you here too. It, uh, I went in, I think it was Santana that was there, the assistant manager, and I was kind of like, just staggering around, and he kind of, he came right up to me. Is there something I can help you with? So I feel real confident as we move forward in this process that you will make sure that i's are dotted and t's are crossed, because that's what we want here in Beloit. We want to be able to offer our residents those eloquencies, that, where they don't have to go other places, but we also want to make sure that our children and families are safe, and that you're also working with our local police department as well, so, yeah, so, I just wanted to mention that. So with that said, I just want to say from my report, I enjoyed the holiday with my family, so as other councilors said, I really don't have a report tonight. However, I want to take a moment to recognize several city employees who have retired or will be retiring this month. First, I would like to congratulate Captain Mike Rosario for his thirty years of leadership, and Steve Bessel for his eighteen-plus years as a firefighter, EMT, relief motor pump operator, and assistant mechanic. Thank you both for your service and dedication to the City of Beloit Fire Department. Second, I also want to congratulate Brad Tran, Tran, and Equipment Operator in Public Works on his retirement after serving over twenty-two years with the city, and Tim Cunningham, a wastewater operator at the treatment plant for his thirty-four years of service. Thank you both and all of you for your service and dedication, especially to these gentlemen for their work with the City of Beloit Public Works Department. We wish you all the best in your retirement. Next, I also want to congratulate Counselor Clint Anderson, who is being sworn in today at the Capitol as State Representative for Assembly District forty-five, and former Counselor Mark Spritzer. He is also being sworn in as State Senator for the fifteenth District of Wisconsin. This is truly great for Beloit, and I know that we will work hard and can, that they will work hard and continue to make us proud here in Beloit. And in closing, I wish everyone a ha, very happy new year. This ends my council report for this evening. Next, item eleven.
City managers' report, there is none. Item twelve is reports from board, uh, city officers, there is none. Item thirteen is adjournment.
May I please have a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Moved by Counselor Terrell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Forbeck. Any questions or discussion? At this time, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes, we, this adjourns our city council meeting for this evening.